That was more complicated than needed to be.
Yeah, and I don't understand the pushback.
(laughing)
I don't know.
The button's broken?
I guess.
Good evening and welcome to the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Greensboro City Council. We are in the Katie Dorsett Council Chamber. Let the record reflect that all members are in attendance. We will begin tonight's meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you. Mrs. Abuzweider, would you lead us in the pledge?
I'd be happy to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Manager, could you please recognize our youth courier?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, our youth courier is Zani Swills. She is a dedicated emerging public health and research professional from Waldorf, Maryland. Passionate about using data and policy to advance community well-being, she is currently pursuing a Masters of Public Health in Leadership and Practice at UNC Chapel Hill. She recently graduated with a BA in Sociology from North Carolina A&amp;T State University, the class of 2024. Congratulations. Deeply committed to public service, Zani has contributed to community-focused research addressing local social issues with the North Carolina Peace Action Incorporated and has presented on educational equity at academic conferences. Her experience includes clinical research and policy analysis at the Duke Clinical Research Institute, the U.S. Foreign Service Institute, and North Carolina A&amp;T State University, with a focus on using research to support policies that improve access to care and resources for underserved communities. Zani is excited to serve as a government intern with the City Manager's Office, where she looks forward to supporting initiatives that promote equity, civic engagement, and transparent government to benefit the Greensboro community she calls home. Welcome and thank you for being with us tonight.
Please silence any and all electronic devices. If you must make or receive a phone call, kindly do so from outside the council chamber. The City of Greensboro strongly encourages residents' input at our meetings. It is the goal of the City Council that the Katie Dorsett Council Chamber is a welcoming and safe space for all community members. In order to speak at tonight's meeting, individuals must sign up to speak by 6:00 PM. If you have signed up to speak online, please let the courier know that you are in attendance. Speakers may address specific consent or business agenda items with three minutes allocated for their remarks. For zoning matters, there is a fifteen-minute presentation for both proponents and opponents of the rezoning, and a five-minute rebuttal period for each side. Speakers cannot relinquish their time to others, and the speaker's order is determined by the presiding officer. Depending on the number of speakers, council may adjust the time allotted for each person. Any handouts must be given to the courier for distribution. All speakers are expected to adhere to the rules of decorum. Any inappropriate or disruptive behavior will result in immediate removal from the meeting. Removal will result in a three-month suspension from in-person participation. The second violation following the initial suspension will result in a six-month suspension. A third violation or any instance involving physical altercations will lead to a twelve-month suspension. Individuals who are suspended will still have the option to participate virtually via Zoom, ensuring that their right to free speech is preserved. Zoom participants shall not speak until they are called upon. By statute, council members must vote on all items unless they have a direct financial interest or if they are affiliated with a nonprofit receiving city funding, in which case they must recuse themselves from votes involving that organization. All votes will be moved and seconded, and the presiding officer will announce the vote total. We have a consent agenda for items G1 through G29, which are a grouping of agenda items that are voted on with one single vote to expedite what is believed to be routine and non-controversial. Any council member may withdraw an item from the consent agenda due to a conflict of interest or for the purpose of voting no. Items removed from the consent agenda for discussion will be placed on the next business meeting agenda. Tonight's meeting does include closed captioning. Depending on the length of tonight's meeting, we may take a short recess around 7:30. The council has been requested to postpone item G1, which is a resolution to approve the contract 2025-0150 for the design of Fire Station 62 for $651,854 with Samet Corporation to the August nineteenth City Council meeting. Staff has advised additional research is needed and requested the item be postponed. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Hightower, seconded by Mayor Protem. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes nine to zero. The applicant has requested to continue item H2 and H3 and H4. H2 is a public hearing for an ordinance annexing territory into the corporate limits for the properties located at portions of 3725 and 3739 and all of 3751 McConnell Road, thirty-five point six eight acres, Mary Bell Tuttle and others. And H3, a public hearing for an ordinance for original zoning for portions of 3725 and 3739 and all of 3751 McConnell Road, Amanda Hodiern for Mary Bell Tuttle, Neil C. Tuttle and others. And item H4, a public hearing for an ordinance for original zoning for a portion of McConnell Road, right-of-way, City of Greensboro, to the August nineteenth City Council meeting without further advertising. Moved by Mrs. Thurm, seconded by Mrs. Hightower. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? And that passes nine to zero. We will move on to the consent agenda. We do have a speaker on a number of these items, G3, G14, G25, and G26. Do we have a motion to move or... I have a motion by Mrs. Hoffman to move the consent agenda minus those items, seconded by Mayor Protem. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? And that passes eight to zero. Item G3 is a resolution to authorize the conveyance of two vehicles to the town of Black Mountain in the estimated value of $9,100. Mr. Hicks?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. Just wanted to make sure we had technical difficulties last meeting. So, good evening, council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. So Greensboro has a disturbing pattern. It would seem. It protects those in power even when they cause harm, and it punishes those who speak the truth. So let's talk about Michelle Kennedy. She left the city with at least two active EEOC complaints against her.
Mr. Hicks, sir, can you just, if you oppose the vehicle issue, can you just speak about opposing it? Because this issue is not about Michelle Kennedy.
Is Michelle Kennedy listed or involved in the request of those two vehicles?
The request came directly from Town Manager Josh Harrell.
Right. And Michelle Kennedy was CC'd on that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll continue. Thank you. So that letter, you know, Michelle Kennedy, back to what I was saying. The city terminated that black employee, gave Michelle Kennedy $132,000 severance package.
I'm sorry, but her termination has nothing to do with the item at hand. The item is conveying two vehicles to Black Mountain. Michelle's relationship with the City of Greensboro has no relevance to this item.
It does if she was part of that request, which I'm trying to speak about.
Well, you're not doing a good job connecting the dots.
Well, that's your opinion, and I appreciate that. But what I'm getting ready to say is that she was also sent off with a glowing letter of recommendation that painted her as a visionary and a champion of equity and with not one word about the serious allegations tied to her leadership. That letter helped secure a new job at the town of Black Mountain. Now she's included on the official request asking Greensboro to donate two vehicles, including one valued at $6,600 to the very government she now works for. So, a city leader accused of retaliation and racial discrimination was rewarded and referred. A black employee who spoke up was fired. And now Greensboro is asking, being asked, to give away public property, taxpayer-bought property to support someone who was quietly paid to leave. So I think that is driven to this agenda item. So I would ask, you know, there was a lot of effort put into Ms. Kennedy's severance. So I would ask the City Council, what have they done to make the black employee who filed the complaints against Michelle Kennedy and alleged that behavior, what have they, what has this council done to make that woman whole? I would agree, and I would say I've donated time and resources to the western part of the state in reference to what happened with Helene. But I think when we look at the clear behavior put on by Michelle Kennedy and the allegations that have been set forth, I think it is unnecessary to continue to push taxpayer money and resources to someone who left under these circumstances. Thank you.
I have a question.
I'm sorry. Yes.
I have a question. So in reference to this particular item, two questions. First of all, what is the process for this? What is the process? And is that process available to everyone? And secondly, how did someone know that we had surplus vehicles as well? Is that posted on a city website somewhere? Or is that some inside knowledge that some would have and be privy to? Because I think as we look at this item, and certainly to want to help any other municipality that's going through something, they would want to have some benefit of that as well, as well as knowing what we do offer and how is that offered. I've also heard from some local nonprofits that work with youth and have asked about our surplus vehicles and have never gotten a clear answer on how to maneuver that process. So I would like to understand the process, number one. And secondly, number two, how is that advertised?
So let me suggest, if we're going to have additional discussion, can this be postponed until the next council meeting or the meeting after? I don't believe this is time-sensitive.
Yes, ma'am, we can.
So can I have a motion to postpone this item?
Motion to move.
Moved by Mrs. Hightower, seconded by Dr. Wells. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? So we will put that to the second meeting in August.
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Okay. Item G14 is a resolution authorizing supplemental agreement number eleven in the amount of $442,388 with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for EL 5101 DJ DR Downtown Greenway Project. Mr. Hicks?
Yep, this is real short, one sentence. I believe Mr. Matheny should recuse himself for obvious reasons, particularly related to this item and general statute 168-78 and 14234. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Is it okay if I make a statement now?
Yes.
You know, there's been a lot of false accusations. And so in the spirit of disclosure, I would like to just read a statement on the topic. As a member of the Greensboro City Council and as president of Downtown Greensboro Incorporated, I have a professional relationship with numerous companies throughout the community. And I serve on the Downtown Greenway Oversight Committee. I'm not sure how anybody can profit on a greenway, but I certainly do not profit directly, or quite frankly indirectly, on the greenway. My professional relationships, this is coming up later, with the Carroll Companies through my work promoting business opportunities in our city. These contractors have had relationships and do in business with the city that span for decades and long before my role as DJI President or a council member. DJI is not a party to any of these contracts. I derive no personal financial benefit. I am simply being transparent about professional relationships. Moving forward, as I have in the past, I will remain cautionary and heed legal advice in ensuring there are no conflicts of interest. And I am proceeding with this vote and other votes in the future after this disclosure in accordance with the advice of our fabulous new city attorney. I am guilty of the emergency alert.
Yes. You will be somewhere or another. Is there a motion for item?
Motion to approve.
That has been moved by Mayor Protem and seconded by Mrs. Thurm. Council, please vote. And that passes nine to zero. Item G25, our budget adjustments approved by the Budget Officer, 61425 through 63025 and 7125 through 7725. Mr. Hicks?
Thank you so much again. Same thing, I think it's necessary for Mr. Matheny to recuse himself. It's evident that the city attorney's office is going to keep the same position as the former city attorney who's now under SBI review. So we'll just see how that plays out with the SBI and Cyberlox and I guess everything. You all have a good night and good luck.
Do we have a motion on twenty-five? Moved by Mrs. Hoffman, seconded by Mrs. Thurm. Council, please vote. And that passes nine to zero. Item G26, budget adjustments requiring council approval, 7125 through 7725. Mr. Hicks? Oh, okay. All right. In his, has he signed off? Moved by Mrs. Thurm, seconded by Mayor Protem. Council, please vote. And that passes nine to zero. Now we move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. Item H... We did do one. Yes. It was verbal. Item H1 is a public hearing for an ordinance for rezoning for 3510 to 3516 West Friendly Avenue and 805, 807 Hobbs Road, Michael S. Fox for Carroll at Hobbs LLC. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Vaughn. Members of City Council, the request before you this evening is a rezoning of property at the corner of Hobbs Road and West Friendly Avenue from its current planning and development zoning classification to planning and development with different zoning conditions. North of this request is currently zoned CDR5, Conditional District Residential Single Family. East of the request is zoned CDCM, Conditional District Commercial Medium. South of the request is zoned R3 Residential Single Family. And west of the request is zoned R3 Residential Single Family as well as CDO, Conditional District Office. The subject properties are currently vacant at this time. North and south of the request are single-family dwellings. East of the request is a shopping center, and west of the request is a religious assembly use. This property is designated as mixed-use commercial in the adopted Friendly Avenue area plan, which is the plan for this area under the comprehensive plan and is also designated as urban general on the built form map of the feature, excuse me, of the comprehensive plan and adjacent to a regional-scale activity center. There is one condition associated with this request that was advertised as part of the hearing. This is a planning and development, so there is an associated unified development plan that's part of the materials that you have to consider. In supporting this request, staff concludes that this does support our affiliate and our framework, big idea, to encourage higher density, mixed-use, and walkable infill development. And the comprehensive plan's growing economic competitiveness, big idea, to build a prosperous and resilient economy that creates equitable opportunities to succeed. The proposed PED zoning designation as conditions allows a mix of residential and non-residential uses that are complementary to the uses that are permitted in the surrounding area. And the uses and densities are appropriate, given the property's location along a major thoroughfare and being directly adjacent to a regional-scale activity center. Staff has obtained the approval of the request. This item was heard at the June sixteenth Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. It was recommended, or excuse me, it was approved, eight to nothing. There were three speakers in favor and two in opposition. The decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission was appealed within the required ten-day appeal period, and that's what brings the case before you this evening. I can answer any questions.
Okay, we'll start with those in favor. Mr. Fox?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Mike Fox. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Tuggle Duggins. And I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Carroll at Hobbs, which is a subsidiary of the Carroll Companies. My address is at 400 Bellmead Street, Suite 800, here in Greensboro. And with me tonight, I have a number of representatives from our client, And with me tonight I have a number of representatives from our client, principally Roy Carroll is here with me tonight and he's going to speak. We've also got various support engineers. John Davenport is here. He did our traffic study and he's available if you have questions, as well as Adam Carroll was at Timmons Group. He's our civil engineer and he's available if you have questions. I'd like to start there, yeah. Is there a way to make it kind of bigger on the whole screen? Thank you. Yeah, so a brief summary of the request. I'd like to start out by thanking the planning staff. This is obviously a large, complicated project and they were great to work with to help make sure that, you know, we, we got everything right through TRC and they did it, they're great to work with as always. It is a conditional rezoning and Mr. Kirkman has identified where it is. It's going from PUD to PUD, but different uses. You all probably know the history of this site. I'm not going to belabor that, but several years ago Carroll Companies purchased it around 2019 and I'll talk a little bit about that in just a minute. But the proposed uses include multifamily, a boutique hotel, restaurants, retail, office, self-storage and structured parking. Carroll Companies purchased this property back in 2019 and soon thereafter we started a series of outreach meetings to the community. We had three really principal sets of neighbors that we focused on and then the larger community as well. And it was the neighbors at Hobbs Landing Neighborhood, which is right adjacent to the property on the back, the neighbors right across Friendly Avenue. In that neighborhood, there's a handful of those that are directly across from the site and the church. The church is our neighbor as well. So we met individually with all of those groups and then we had a very large community meeting too. And really the purpose of that, at that point Carroll Companies had not developed their full plan and they wanted to get feedback from the community on what they wanted to see there. And what you see reflected here today came out of those meetings largely. Folks wanted to see mixed-use, walkable, you know, great restaurants and so really this plan encompasses that. It took a few years to, and then there was a thing called COVID as well that slowed everything down, but by the time we came back, they came back with a definite plan, we started earlier, early this year, meeting with those same groups again. The Hobbs Landing folks, the church and then the folks across the street. And then we had a larger community meeting as well where I think about 150 people attended and by and large, not unanimous obviously, but yeah, 95-plus percent of the comments we received were very positive about the plan, particularly at this, the larger meeting as well as the small, the small meeting. We realized, and Mr. Carroll will tell you when he gets up here too, getting the zoning is not the end of talking to the neighbors and working with them and that's all the neighbors. We continue to work with the church on an issue of a potential shared driveway. We're working with the neighbors across the street to make sure they have adequate buffering and such. And then we'll continue to work with Hobbs Landing Neighborhoods. Unfortunately, we, we had a series of meeting with, meetings with them early on and then things kind of stalled for a while and then tried to get back together and we've got a calendar, meeting on the calendar right now, August 12th, so we are looking forward to talking to them. And we've gotten a number of nice comments from just folks in the, in the community in general about how they think this is a great project for this site and it fits in very well. I'm going to ask Mr. Carroll to come up now and introduce himself and give you his address and he's going to talk through the plan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council members. It's exciting to be in front of you today and share with you what I think is a fantastic project for our city. My name is Roy Carroll, 201 North Elm Street. This site represents one of the largest infill sites next to a large, you know, shopping area in our city. And so it's like Mr. Fox said, when we first set out, we put this site under contract, we held the big neighborhood meeting in 2019, December 2nd and we had about 150 people, our neighbors and such, come in and we approached this differently than we'd ever approached before. Most of the time developers walk in, I mean, most of the time we do and everybody else, we walk in with a plan, right? We're like, neighbors, this is the plan. We did this one completely different. We walked in with suggestion cards and we said, put whatever. And as you can imagine, we got all kinds of comments, you know, turn into a park, put a few houses on it, do things like that, but it's really too valuable a site for that. The interesting thing was not one card came back, put a strip center with a big surface parking lot. So, and that's what's approved basically. So what we heard a lot of is we'd like to have shops, we'd like to have, you know, restaurants, we, we want it to be walkable and quality of construction, that's one of the main things that we heard is it needs to be high quality. And so we went back and, and got our team all excited about taking all these suggestions. Of course, that lends itself to be a mixed-use development in and of itself, all those comments at different things. But as Mr. Fox stated, COVID hit and we kind of, we didn't backburner the project. We, I was just challenging our team and I can't tell you how many versions we're on today, what you see before you, but it's a lot. And my job is, I've got, I've got real smart people back at the office that make me look smarter than I am, but my job is to challenge those people. So we were challenging each other on, can we come up with something that looks great? And one of the things that we wanted to do that we felt would be a success here is boutique hotel, which the rendering in front of you, I'll just point to that for a second, but that is actually a hotel and it's intentional that it looks like a brownstone town home and those doorways are faux, they're not real, because everything is internally focused with this, with this plan. And so the reason we did that, the faux town home facade, which is very expensive to, to build, is we wanted this to fit into the neighborhood. Even though there's a lot going on here, we wanted it to fit into the neighborhood and we're very conscientious of the neighbors on, all around us, in front of us, behind us and everything else. But as Mike said, I won't go through all the meetings, but we held numerous meetings and people's living rooms, church and, and we're not through with that today. We still have some work to do with some of our neighbors and some of the Hobbs Landing folks are here. We've talked to them, we're going to continue to talk with them, but we wanted to go ahead and move this forward because we think the timing is right. Big job announcements and everything else that you all have been a part of, that I'm excited about for our community and frankly, we want to, we want to start building things like this. And we feel like a lot of those folks that are going to be moving, looking at our community to potentially move here and go to work at some of these job announcements that, that we've talked about, we think they want, you know, high-end restaurants, high-end shops, nice boutique hotel housing and such, but not just for those folks, folks that live here. I think that we can, we can definitely have a successful development the way we've planned it. And just to talk about some of the components of this, I've mentioned the boutique hotel. What's a boutique hotel? In my mind, a boutique hotel is sixty-ish or so rooms. I see this as being suites, I see this as being the best in Greensboro. And so that's our goal, is to have a really nice hotel suite option. And so we haven't, we haven't decided on a flag yet, we may just private, private brand it. Frankly, we're looking at more, doing more and more of that. Restaurants, I would hope to have two to three at least restaurants. I think this is a great restaurant location. You know, we talked about the neighbors and walkability and everything. We want the neighbors to walk to this and, and to, they're in the center. I maybe I can change the channel here a little bit and show you, I don't know. This is maybe, you can see from the plan here, it's, it's got a center courtyard, a little retail, you said a little retail, one story. I could say it be in an ice cream coffee shop or something like that. So the idea is even if you can't walk here, you come here, you park your car and it's very walkable, very little parking in front of the shops and the restaurants and things like that. So that's very important. Small shops, I can tell you, my phone's been ringing. There's a number of very high-end retailers that like to come to our area and are looking for something like this to kind of plant their flag, so to speak. And so I'm very excited about high-end small shops. We're not talking about anything big. We're not talking about, you know, grocery stores or drugstores or things like that, no drive-through windows and things such as that. So this is, this is a very, I would say, a very neighborhood type, even though it's larger, it's, it's, it's designed to fit in the neighborhood and reduce traffic. We don't want a bunch of through traffic. Apartments, we're looking at roughly 250 upscale apartments. They'll be on the first floor, you'll have the retail restaurants and such and then above you'll have the hotel and you'll have the multifamily. The B-Safe, I know there's been some buzz on social media, a little pun intended. My daughters tell me I don't do social media, so, you know, but there's, there was some commentary a few months back about the B-Safe and how that fit. I love B-Safe, of course. I think it's a great brand. I think it's one of the highest-end self-storage brands out there, but does it belong in the corner of Friendly and Hobbs? No, it doesn't. And so why B-Safe on this site? Well, I've got a little problem, a physical problem with this site and I didn't realize it until the engineers told me, but I've got 16 feet of fall from the back towards the Hobbs Landing. You can see the blue and the parking garage and so I've got to make up 16 feet of grade in order to not have this on a hillside like that and you're trying to walk around, be pedestrian and you're on a hillside. I guess it worked, but it'd be better to try to flatten it out. So I got two options. One, I can do a retaining wall and I told planning and zoning, I build a lot of retaining walls, I've tried to make them look good, but I can't make a retaining wall look good. I've never built a beautiful retaining wall or one that we could look at, look at that retaining wall. So what I can do though is I can use a B-Safe and we've done this before because B-Safes, self-storage don't require windows. You know, we put faux windows on our B-Safes, make it look kind of like an office building, but I can use the back of that B-Safe, plant it in the ground and use that as a retaining wall on the backside and only have one story sticking up in the back. I'll do the same thing with the garage. I'll use it, doesn't need windows, but I'll plant that garage into the ground and you won't see it from Friendly, you won't see it from Hobbs. So I can use those two elements and create my retaining wall and then I can do the rest of this and create a, an awesome, awesome, walkable community. Okay, okay. But I truly believe that Greensboro is ready for something like this. You know, again, we plan on, like most of the stuff we do, we plan on building it and keeping it forever and, you know, it's the only way I can stand before you today and say, I can tell you, it will be maintained at the highest standards because we won't sell it in my lifetime at least and my daughter Madison's here and I told her not to sell it, so anyways. But I appreciate your consideration on this. This is big, this is for our, this is big for our community, but I think our community is ready for something just like this. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Real quickly, I know we have just a couple of minutes left. I do want to talk about the Friendly Avenue area plan just briefly and remind everyone that this, this does fit in the mixed-use commercial designation that this site has on the, in the Friendly Avenue area plan. And it promotes, as Mr. Carroll said, walkable, mixed-use development, creating access from surrounding neighborhoods and increasing development intensity along the corridor. It also fits within the 2040 Comprehensive Plan and again encourages more diverse and attractive mix of uses with high-quality development and increased density. That's an important part of the 2040 Plan is increased density because your council and, and your staff have been very active in trying to make sure that we have enough homes to support all the people that want to live here in Greensboro and that may be moving here to take advantage of some of the great job announcements that y'all have been a part of recently too. One other thing, and I'll go back to the site plan a little bit. We, we really have worked very diligently to try to make sure that, you know, in talking to our neighbors, you know, we minimize the impact on them. We're working with the church next door about the possibility of a shared driveway, which they are encouraged by. They were just wanting to review the plan and, and then come back to us by and if that happens, then we come back with the staff and work on that. We've worked with the neighbors right across the street on Friendly on some additional buffering and landscaping for them and they're, they're appreciative of that and, and they're supportive of the project. The folks at the church have been supportive of the project. And then in regards to the Hobbs Landing folks, we've tried to push all the density and if you can, you know, if you look back at this, sorry, I'll just finish up if I could this off, pushed the density up toward Friendly Avenue and away from them and so there's considerable setback, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Fox or Mr. Carroll? We do have two speakers in opposition, Frank Burton and Stephen Marks.
My name is Frank Burton. I live at 3213 Hobbs Landing Court in Greensboro, a property adjacent to the tract of land being proposed for rezoning. I'm here on behalf of the Hobbs Landing Homeowners Association, which opposes this rezoning to a PUD with drastically reduced restrictions compared to the current zoning. We are specifically concerned about the lack of limitations on the number of access points into and out of the property off of Friendly Avenue and Hobbs Road and removal of restrictions on self-storage facilities and other types of businesses that would be disruptive to the quiet neighborhood we currently enjoy. Hobbs Landing Court residents have had and plan to continue to have cordial discussions with Mr. Carroll about his plans for the property, but we have grave concerns about what could become a major disruptive situation literally in our backyards. For this reason, we ask that you deny this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Stephen Marks. I live at 3214 Hobbs Landing Court. Basically want to kind of reiterate some of what Frank just had spoken about and, and we have total regard for Mr. Carroll and Carroll Company. We think of the quality and things like that. Our, our concern about this really largely starts with the density of what we're talking about here. And the fact that the current PUD that is in place was something that we put a lot of time and energy and did exactly what zoning and city council wants a neighborhood to do. We worked with the previous developer. If you look at what is in the PUD, there's all kinds of restrictions, things that we worked together jointly to put together. I know it doesn't concern you, there's actually even a land covenant with certain requirements that were put in. All of these things were done by the city's recommended system. And when it came time to do the zoning request, because we had put it together jointly, we endorsed it. We did ask for a continuance because with summer schedules, the earliest we could all get together is August 12th. We did ask for the convenient continuance. We were informed Friday afternoon that we really didn't give them enough notice, so they would not be supportive of the covenants, I mean, the extension that we, that we would have liked. And, and the reason is, is that when you look at the current PUD, as I say, you have all these restrictions, all these things that are designed to protect the neighborhood. The proposed PUD that you're going to be voting on tonight adds in there things that we have purposely been able to exclude. The storage center is, is really a bone of contention for a lot of people. Adding in the hotel and bars, but also the fact that there are no guardrails on this proposal. When you look at that, there's nothing in writing that says what the maximum height is going to be, what the setbacks are going to be. I know some of these things obviously are going to go through a lot more discussions with GDOT and everybody else as, as we, they narrow out some of these different details, but there really are some, some real concerns about that. We started looking at density and to be honest with you, it's a moving target. What originally started and I'm going since the zoning meeting, what was in the paper, this has not been conveyed to me personally by Mr. Fox or Mr. Carroll. this has not been conveyed to me personally by Mr. Fox or Mr. Carroll, but that 80-unit boutique hotel is now, from 80 rooms, I see listed at 150 rooms. At the zoning, it was 200 apartments. It's now 250. The retaining wall is now 550 bays. There's going to be 40,000 to 50,000 square feet of office, retail, and restaurants. That's an awful lot going on to one corner. Would probably say that, in our mind, this is better suited to be downtown Greensboro in the old newspaper corner, but that's a different discussion. But when we tried to look at some hard numbers on traffic, as I say, density keeps changing, so all we can do is, as an example, according to GDOT, in 2023, between the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., there's 21,246 trips through this intersection. We're going to add five more interns and exits to this. The daily trip count by their traffic study is going to add 6,573 trips. That's an increase of 30.9 percent. That's a lot. The peak hour increase, be it in the morning or the evening, changes from 13.7 to 17.6 percent. Once again, we just think that is a lot. We have concern about a proposed lane change on Hobbs Road, but I know that's a GDOT issue, but the way they have proposed eliminating and making the left exclusive turn has been tried before, and the city reversed it because it creates a mess. That backup would probably impact their outside access, number three. But anyhow, as I say, we would have liked for this vote to have been delayed so that we could mutually have put together some of these rules and regs to protect everybody, and so that's why we have asked for the delay at this point. I know that this is, we're kind of tilting at windmills on this, but I just feel like it's important for the council to hear and understand the concerns that we as active citizens do have as to how this is going about. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions for Mr. Burton or Mr. Marks? There is a five-minute rebuttal. Mr. Fox?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's important to focus on the fact that this is one of the largest remaining and maybe, you know, one of the best opportunities for infill development in Greensboro. And this site deserves more than a single-story strip shopping center, and the community deserves more than a single-story strip shopping center. And I think it's remarkable, and it speaks to the testament to listening to the community, that you all know the history of this site and the opposition that it has generated, and we've had more meetings on this zoning case than anyone I've ever been involved in with neighbors and have gotten more support from neighbors. And I think it's a testament that while we respect their opinions, there are only two people here speaking tonight against it, and this room would have been packed the last time this happened. And so I think that speaks to the testament of not only the plan and what the community as a whole sees the value of the plan, but also the outreach effort and the real listening to the community and what they wanted there. I do want to point out, you know, Mr. Burton's point, they, it's a lovely neighborhood that they have there, Hobbs Landing, beautiful homes, a great place to live. But I will point out the obvious, there's a reason that people like to live in places like that. I mean, they can walk to Friendly Center. I mean, it's one of the largest shopping centers in the city, and it has a great variety of stores and restaurants and such, and so I would certainly contend that that's an amenity. I know that no one ever likes to see change, but we think this will be another amenity for not only, you know, the greater community, but also for that neighborhood as well. I would point out that in terms of the access numbers, we've worked with GDOT to get all that approved and engineered. Again, John Davenport is here. If you have any questions about any of the traffic issues. The B-Safe in particular, I think the only thing that generates less traffic than a B-Safe is a cemetery, because there's just about five or 10 cars a day come in and out of there. Most people, you know, they rent one of those things, and they don't come back for three months, maybe, so there's not a lot of activity there. I would like to disagree with something Mr. Marks said, when he said there's no, there's no height limitations, there's no setbacks on there. Those are in the plan. Those are part of the conditions and part of the PUD that we worked with the staff on. So there are plenty of guardrails on this project, and Mr. Carroll certainly intends to build, you know, what he has, what he has shown you and what he has shown all the neighbors, and that's consistent with the PUD. So I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have, and Mr. Carroll will answer questions as well, or we can get any of our engineers if anybody has any questions.
Yes, Madam Mayor, yes, just a quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
A couple of questions. One is regarding the neighbors who are living there in Hobbs Landing.
Yes, sir.
And I know we have a type C buffer there. Just what have you done, and what have you shared with them, or what has come up in those community conversations about how to protect their investment while also going up with this infrastructure?
Yeah, absolutely. Can I get the presentation back up? I want to use our site plan to illustrate that. Is it right there? Yeah, thank you. Okay, there we go. Sorry. All right, so one of the things that we've done, you see the green around the edge, that is a setback, and that is a 20-foot buffer, and it will be, have dense vegetation, and then there's a 30-foot wide service road that goes around the outside, so there's 50 feet right there setback before you start any structure. And the two uses, as Mr. Carroll explained, that are on the closest of the Hobbs Landing neighbors are the least intense and the lowest in height. As Mr. Carroll explained, because they're digging into the hill there and going down 17 feet, a lot of the parking and most of the B-Safe will actually be under the grade of the land there when you look at it from Hobbs Landing. So they'll essentially be looking at something about one story in height, whether it's the back wall of a B-Safe or the back of a parking deck, which will be nicely built and screened as well. So that's one of the things, and really, it's about 150 feet from the property line until you go more than one story. So we felt like that was an important asset and protection for that neighborhood, because we can understand why you wouldn't want something right on the property line that's way above you and looking right down in your backyard. And so Mr. Carroll said, "We're not going to do that. We're going to put some uses back there that will be very low intensity to respect that neighborhood." And so, does that answer your question?
Additionally, how about light pollution?
So, so all the lighting will...
From that back corner onto Hobbs Landing Court?
Yeah, all the lighting will comply with the city ordinance, which requires that it be down, you know, that you can't, you can't throw light on someone else's property. Now, obviously, there will be light from, you know, the development, just like there is at Friendly Center right now, but there won't be any lights shining, you know, toward those homes. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. You brought John Davenport, and so you did a traffic analysis. Was there anything that stood out in that?
You know, John's report, and I'm happy to get him up here to speak to any specific questions, is that, you know, the access points will all work, the amount of traffic, you know, that will be generated will work on these sites. We're doing, we are doing a number of improvements, obviously sidewalks and enhanced sidewalks on Friendly, and we're going to be restriping Hobbs Road to improve that interchange there. And that was one of the things that we heard from the neighbors across the street, is that that really doesn't function well the way it is, so we're going to be restriping it to change the turn lane some. And with the church potentially sharing an access, that really eliminates three offsetting driveway, or two offsetting driveways and a street across the street, which is not a very great traffic situation. So hopefully, we can, you know, the church will be interested in doing that, and from their perspective, they love the idea that they could potentially, you know, go from their parking lot into the back of this development and even get out on Hobbs Road as well. Of course, their, their traffic is generated mostly on Sundays and maybe a couple nights during the week, so it's not an everyday business, but it was important to work with them on the traffic, but really no areas of concern from the Davenport study, and GDOT, you know, reviewed that and obviously concurred.
Okay. Thank you. That answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The main thing I want to add that has been sort of glossed over here is regarding the buffer that Mr. Holson inquired about. The green line that you see is actually an access road that will enter from Hobbs and go around the property and exit onto Friendly, and we have considerable concerns about that becoming a shortcut from Hobbs through to Friendly, just people accessing that day and night. The buffer that we've been shown is a few evergreen trees built on a mound, which I'm not convinced that from my backyard, that's going to hide the parking deck, which is going to be right behind my house, or that it's going to that much obscure the B-Safe storage, which is behind the houses closer to the entrance to Hobbs Road. So that's the only thing that's just not been really discussed a great deal, especially this access road going through from Hobbs to Friendly, and the degree of traffic that may just be using that as a shortcut. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved to second.
Council on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Comments? Motion? Mrs. Hoffman?
Yeah, I'm certainly going to be very supportive of this plan. I've been involved with this piece of dirt in Greensboro since I was elected in 2011. Within a few days of my election to city council, I got a phone call from the attorney representing a company from Raleigh who were interested in acquiring this property and rezoning it. So over my 14 years on council, we've gone through three rezoning attempts or considerations, and now the fourth with the PUD request this evening. I'm not going to go into this whole history. I will tell you that with the third rezoning, which was in May of 2015, that was, that was with the Halpern Companies, and I, we worked with the neighbors, I was involved, and what I really insisted on then is that we just didn't want another shopping center. And so I was quite insistent that this really had to be a mixed-use development with, which included not only retail, but also residential. And the Halpern plan, actually, that was set forth at that point, was to really have some brownstone residences, two-story brownstone residences in the back of the property that backed up to Hobbs Landing. Within several years, I think Mr. Halpern realized that this was really not their forte, that they were really shopping centers, center developers, and Mr. Carroll acquired the property in 2019. And as he said, he really approached this with a neighborhood meeting at the time to get input from the neighborhood in terms of what they would like to see on this almost seven acres, a very important piece of land in Greensboro. And so that was the, that was where he started with the planning. And along the way, he's been kind enough to involve, involve me in looking at some of the plans as they were developed, and I believe the mayor as well. I think on a couple of occasions, we've, we've looked at the planning together. And so we are here today. I was at the meeting a few months ago when Mr. Carroll presented basically the plan that we're looking at today, a couple of hundred people, I think, at the Lutheran Church that day, and it appeared to me that the support was fairly strong and enthusiastic. What I will say to you this evening is that I am enthusiastic about supporting this project. It really has exceeded my expectations for this nearly seven acres in District Four and a neighborhood that I, that I lived in for a long time, just across the street. So I, I really would like to move this item. We may have more discussion, but I'm happy to move the item tonight.
Second. Any other comments? Chair? I know Mary Kay, that you, you did, and...
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I echo Mrs. Hoffman's sentiments. I do want to say that, you know, as we look for long-term goals in the city, as we look for our future, we need to consider things like that. We've all talked about, we need more density. And with the residential here, we talk about all of these things that we need to do. We need walkability, we need livability, we need access to, you know, shopping centers, we need access to areas that people can go to, and this, this one really fits everything in that bill. The sidewalks will be improved, the sidewalks will be there, you know, things that people ask for, for walkability. The bus route is there, everything for transportation is just laid out and perfect for this area. I, too, agreed at the time that a shopping center was not the best thing for this, because you had no break then between, at all, between the residential and absolute commercial. So to me, this really kind of checks all the boxes on what we want to see in our city. You can live there, you can walk to Friendly Shopping Center, you can go to the restaurants there, you can go to the restaurant in the, in the development. You can live there, you can probably buy there, you can do just about anything that you would want to do in a walkable area. So knowing also, I checked, you know, the bus routes and other transportation, knowing all of that, you, you've got everything you need. And with, I think we've all seen with some of the newer generations, they really don't use cars as much as our generation does, and I truly believe that with all the companies coming and all the successes that are coming, that they will be looking at areas like this, and this is perfectly what they want. So I am, I second it, but I'm definitely in favor of this. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. I know that you can choose to spend your money anywhere you want, and I appreciate that you're spending it right here in the city of Greensboro, your home, our home. I think this is going to be a great development. I know that this has been 12 years in the making, and I look forward to seeing it go vertical at some point. I like that you took all of the suggestions that people made and found a way to incorporate them. I think this is going to be a great addition to the Friendly area, and I also think it'll set a standard for future development. So I want to say thank you. If there are no further comments, it was moved by Mrs. Hoffman, seconded by Mrs. Abuzweider. Mrs. Hoffman? Mrs. Hoffman?
I'll read the statement, please. The Greensboro City Council believes that its action to approve the rezoning request for the properties at 3510 through 3516 West Friendly Avenue and 805 through to 807 Hobbs Road from PUD, Planned Unit Development, to PUD, Planned Unit Development, to be consistent, consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's Future Built Form Map and Future Land Use Map. The proposed PUD zoning district permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Counsel, please vote. And that passes nine to zero. Thank you. We'll now move on to item H5 and H6. H5 is a public hearing for an ordinance annexing territory into the corporate limits for property located at 3526 McConnell Road, .936 acres, Amanda Hodiern and others. And item H6, a public hearing for an ordinance for original zoning for 3526 McConnell Road, Amanda Hodiern, Ernie Reinstein, and Jason Simon on behalf of Molly Biggs. Ms. Hodiern is here for questions. We have no other speakers signed up. Mr. Kirkman, could you give us an overview?
Yes, I'd be glad to. Thank you. Again, the request, excuse me, is annexation and original zoning for this property, which is just under one acre in size, from the current county AG agricultural designation to city conditional district light industrial. North of the request is zone county RM18MH, which is a multifamily designation with a manufactured housing overlay. East and south of the request is zone city CDLI, conditional district light industrial. And west of the request is zone county agricultural. The subject property currently contains a single-family dwelling. North of the property contains a manufactured home park. East and south of this request is undeveloped at this time, and west of the request contains single-family dwellings. The property is designated as industrial on the future land use map of the comprehensive plan and also industrial on the future built form map of the comprehensive plan. This is a conditional zoning, and these are the conditions that were advertised as part of the hearing this evening. And recommend the approval. Staff notes that this request does support the comprehensive plans, filling in our framework, big idea, to arrange our land uses where we live, work, attend school, shop, and enjoy our free time to create a more vibrant and livable Greensboro, as well as the growing economic competitiveness, big idea, to increase and preserve the inventory of a developable sites compatible with corporate and industrial uses. The proposed CDLI district as condition permits a variety of limited manufacturing, warehouse, and distribution uses that are similar to existing uses present in the surrounding area. And again, staff is recommending approval of the request. These items were heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their June 16th meeting. At that meeting, there was one speaker in favor and none in opposition, and the commission did recommend approval of both items. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Kirkman? Any questions for Ms. Hodiern? Do we have a motion on this item? I'm sorry, it was moved by who? Sharon, seconded by Dr. Wells. This is for the annexation.
Okay. So make sure I got the right statement here.
Well, this is annexation first, I think.
Yeah, this is the annexation part. So that passes nine to zero. You waiting on someone?
Yeah, me.
Who you?
Me, of all people.
And that, now it passes nine to zero. And I assume that Mrs. Hightower is going to move H6.
That is correct. Thank you very much.
Seconded by Dr. Wells. Okay. Mrs. Hightower, will you read the statement, please?
Yes, thank you very much. The Greensboro City Council believes its action to approve the original zoning request for the property at 3526 McConnell Road from County AG Agricultural to city CDLI, conditional district light industrial, to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan Future Built Form Map and Future Land Use Map. The proposed city CDLI zoning district permits uses that fit the content of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Counsel, please vote. And that passes nine to zero. Item H7, eight, and nine. Item H7 is a public hearing for an ordinance annexing territory into the corporate limits for properties on Willow Road and Sharp Road, 27.64 acres, Mount Zion Baptist Church of Greensboro, Inc. And item H8, a public hearing for an ordinance for original zoning and rezoning for properties on Willow Road, Alamance Church Road, and Sharp Road, Mark Isaacson for Mount Zion Baptist Church of Greensboro. And item H9, a public hearing for an ordinance for original zoning for a portion of Willow Road right-of-way city of Greensboro. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes, thank you again, Mayor Vaughn. The request this evening is for annexation, original zoning and rezoning of a number of properties at Alamance Church Road, Willow Road, and Sharp Road. The request is to go from county RM8 residential multifamily, county RS30 residential single-family, city R3, and city R5 residential single-family to city planned unit development. North of the request is currently a zone city RM8 and county RS40, which is residential single-family. East of the request is zone city R3 and county RS30 residential single-family. South of the request is zone city R3 and city R5. West of the request is zone city R3, city RM8, and city CDO, conditional district office. The subject properties contain single-family dwellings, religious assembly uses, and undeveloped land. North of the request are multifamily dwellings, an assisted living facility, and undeveloped land. East of the request are single-family dwellings and undeveloped land. South of the request are single-family dwellings and undeveloped land. West of the requests are also single-family dwellings, as well as an assisted living facility, and undeveloped land. Property is designated as residential on the future land use map of the comprehensive plan and as urban in general on the future built form map. This is a conditional zoning, and these are the conditions that were advertised as part of the request. And as well, since this is a planning and development, there is an associated unified development plan that was with your materials. Staff has concluded that this request does support the comprehensive plans, filling in our framework, big idea, to arrange our land uses for where we live, work, attend school, shop, and enjoy our free time to create a more vibrant and livable Greensboro, and notes that this district as condition allows a mixture of residential housing types and complementary non-residential uses. The request also maintains continuity with the existing historic religious assembly use and is compatible with existing uses in the surrounding area, and staff has recommended the approval of the request. These requests were heard at the June 16th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The commission did vote to recommend in favor of all items. At that meeting, there was one speaker in favor and none in opposition. I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kirkman? Mr. Isaacson, we have no speakers in opposition. Mr. Isaacson?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Mayor Protam and members of council. I'm Mark Isaacson, 804 Green Valley Road in Greensboro, and I'm honored this evening to be here on behalf of Mount Zion Baptist Church. With me this evening are a few members of our team, and if you'll just raise your hands, Odell Cleveland, Lee Lloyd, Dr. Fred Wood is here as well, and folks from, engineers from McAdams, who have been the engineers on this project. Mount Zion Church has been at this property for nearly 50 years, and now it plans to expand its campus and ministry to provide an array of services that are needed to support the residents of southeast Greensboro. The church identified, after many years of discussion and study, the church identified needs for surrounding community and prepared a development plan, which we'll review in a few minutes, to provide those services to southeast Greensboro under the umbrella of its ministry. The plan was designed with intentionality to provide needed medical care, senior living, and reasonably affordable housing opportunities, all within a walkable campus expansion. This is a unique project in that the church will maintain ownership of the property and will oversee its development and operation for many years to come. All the components will be subject to the church's management and will operate cohesively as a unified campus in service to this community. When we get a project into our office, sometimes we give them nicknames, and I nicknamed this one, or we did, the 3D project, Doctors Doors and Ducks. And I've learned a lot from Odell in working with him over the years. This proposed campus expansion that you see before you, and I've handed out the plan as in paper as well, includes a new fellowship hall that you see on the left in orange, a 45,000 square foot medical center, up to 280 units for senior housing, and a 20,000 square foot senior support center. And south of Alamance Church Road, 75 townhomes or single-family detached homes to assist in addressing critical housing needs, as well as a passive recreation space in the northern area that you see in dark green and the walking trail and other facilities there. This will be a real benefit to seniors living on campus in that they can see a doctor, obtain assistance at the senior support center, such as technological or computer assistance or scheduling appointments, companionship opportunities that are onsite, interactions with each other, that is, with scheduled activities without ever leaving the campus. We had several larger group and smaller group and individual meetings with our neighbors, and we certainly heard a lot of questions, but we heard no opposition. And we heard no opposition at the prior public hearing at the lower body at the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think Dr. Wood would like to speak to you about the outreach in a few minutes. So doctors, because we'll have medical office onsite, doors, because we'll have a lot of housing onsite, and ducks, because we'll have a pond and a passive recreation area. And if you've listened to Odell at any speaking opportunity, you'll know that taking his grandchildren to interact with ducks and nature is very important and a high priority. So those are the three big components in this project. This is the first of its kind for southeast Greensboro. It will set a high standard for development in this area. It represents a significant investment in southeast Greensboro that demonstrates this church's commitment to serving this community. It's an expansion of an existing church campus, and the church's ownership will ensure operational efficiency and prompt attention to maintenance and facility matters. And finally, I think it's important to consider that the church here will remain the largest stakeholder in this project. And they will see to it that this expansion limits any negative impacts and that the, this is a built-in safety net in this project that is unique. So with that, we have a few minutes left. I would like to invite Dr. Wood to, he would prefer to speak to you directly, although I think you may have seen a letter from him, but I would invite him up to speak to you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Fred Aswood Jr. I live at Full Acorn Court, just a block away from Mount Zion Church. I've lived there for 50 years. I did send a letter to the council. I hope that you did receive it. I just want to reiterate a couple of things from that letter. I've had very cogent and comfortable conversations with Reverend Odell about this project. I describe it as an edifice for the people. Over the past 50 years, we've had a lot of rezoning in the neighborhood, but nothing of this caliber, nothing that speaks to the people. And that's a very prominent thing. This is the first time in my 50 years there that an entity has come to the community in advance and said, this is what we want to do in your community. And I'm very impressed with that. Reverend Odell has pledged that during the construction and during the process, that the church will remain in touch with the community to continue to answer questions and to use all forms of outreach to make sure that the community is adequately informed as to what's going on. Finally, I see no reason why this project should not be approved. It's a very, very positive step for the southeast community, the Rotherwood community. I hope that during the next five years, I will be able to see some fruition, and maybe I'll have a room in the senior living place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all from the applicant. Our members of our team are happy to answer any questions that council may have. We appreciate your consideration.
Mark, I had a quick question. Because I know it's going to be sort of an expansive project. Do we have any traffic considerations or concerns?
Thank you. We did have a traffic impact study prepared, reviewed by GDOT. I believe, as you all may know, Alamance Church Road was widened some years ago. All of the...
Actually, about two years ago.
Two years ago? Okay. Thank you. But yes, the traffic impact study was very thorough and detailed. GDOT has reviewed it, approved it. The church will be making some improvements to the intersections and the access points, but otherwise, the study reflected that all of the improvements would be able to adequately handle the traffic generated by this development.
Okay, and the neighborhood will be able to, you know, exit and enter their community without any problems going through. So that's great.
That's right.
That was really my only question.
Madam Mayor?
Comments, but I'll wait for my comments. I'll wait for my comments. I do have comments.
Okay.
So I'll let you...
I'm sure you do.
I sure do. I absolutely do. Thank you.
Mark, I do see a little bit of water in the property. Just any thoughts on watershed or environmental, any issues that cropped up?
Nothing has come up. We have been through TRC sketch plan review. No red flags were identified, but of course, this is a, you know, multi-phased project, and it will go through several layers of rigorous review by the city staff and NCDOT and others. And so we do not anticipate any issues with watershed.
Any other questions for Mr. Isaacson?
Okay, thank you.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Holston, seconded by Mayor Protam. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. That passes unanimously. That passes unanimously. Comments or motion?
Yeah, I'm making the motion. But if there's anybody else that comments.
Yeah, I do.
Well, before some of you take some of my comments, and first of all, let me just say thank you. Kudos to the church, to Mount Zion. And I had to write my comments so I don't get caught up in the moment, but kudos to them for, I think, as one word that Mark just said, to be intentional about this project. Very thoughtful. It will be a major catalyst in southeast Greensboro. East Greensboro has been long waiting for this. So Ms. Hoffman, you talk about your project previously, how many years that has been. This has been years in the making too. But it's very thoughtful, and it's very considerate. Considerate of development, of quality, and community, as well as church. So that is something that I think a lot of times is missing from some of our developments. They don't consider all the aspects. And being in this area, I think will speak volumes to other developers that will come that will know they will have to step their game up and improve the quality that we deserve and expect in our area of east Greensboro. I'm very passionate about east Greensboro, and these are things that we have deserved for years. And so I'm appreciative of that. The fact that we did improve Alamance Church Road with sidewalks and street widening has now allowed even more ability and access for you to have this project come into this area. Mr. Wood, I want to step in and say, you want a room, my daughter's going to probably make sure I get a room over there too. She's already told me I got to go somewhere. So thank you for building this for me, and actually, right up the street. But again, this project, the design of what you're doing, the medical facility and the fellowship hall, yes, and the senior living, and the attainable apartments and attainable housing will really do things. It's a shot in the arm that we have needed for the adrenaline to kick in and really rise our community to the highest level that it can be. And it will also add to the other amenities that we have, the historic Bimbo Park that we have, Hayes Taylor Y, that's over there, the Bob McAdoo Basketball Court that's getting ready to be dedicated. There's so many good things that are happening. And I want to personally tell you, thank you very much for this. I'm excited. I will drive by every day. And I want to know, when will you get started? When is the start date? Is that tomorrow, once we approve it tonight? Because I think the sooner the better. And we have to make sure that this project does move. And anything that we can do, we are here to make sure we serve you as you are serving us. And thank you so much for this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sounds like Sharon just picked her room already. I also want to thank and congratulate Mount Zion Baptist Church for a couple of things. One is for building community right where they are. They've always been in the community with Spencer Street and the others, and now they're in Alamance Church and Willa Roads. And I was a part of their growth before, back in 1996, '97. And it was a different kind of a participation then, but I'm awfully happy to be a part of the growth again. When I attended the community meeting over at the church, Reverend Cleveland was sharing with those who attended that the investment, and I'm using that term very intentionally, the investment into the community is over $100 million, and that's critical. It's an investment of over $100 million. You have a mixed use. You have the senior living that is so widely needed all across Greensboro, but especially in east and southeast Greensboro. You have the medical portion of it. You have kind of its own greenway. But still, the investment in the infrastructure in that community is critical. I'm happy to support it tonight. I'm happy to see it come to fruition. And I'm looking forward to the day when it does start. I know Sharon wants it to start tonight, tomorrow. But as soon as possible, you're doing your due diligence, you're doing the work that you should be doing, and just looking forward to additional growth and investment in Greensboro. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pender?
I too just want to say just thank you for the ingenuity to really, and me coming from a healthcare background, so I'm always bringing a healthcare lens to what I'm doing because health is not just relegated to physical health. But just looking at this development and just looking at, just me knowing the healthcare need in this community on this side of town, I say well done. And the fact that, when you're looking at the intersexuality of housing and health, and the fact that we know that seniors are the largest growing demographic here globally, but also here locally, being proactive about this, so going back to Mayor Protam when she said, like, how are we forward-thinking? So how are we making sure that we have not only attainable housing, but making sure that we have healthcare where it's trusted? And we know that when you think about where I'm living and being able to get that healthcare, do I have that trust? And so just thinking of it from a holistic standpoint, when you think about mind, body, and soul, this is an example of how you can bring all of those elements together. And so I say thank you, because I know how hard it is to be able to have access to healthcare and the fact that we are getting it in east Greensboro, to southeast Greensboro. This is just a start of many opportunities that I hope to be able to see as we look forward in the future. So I say thank you for that.
Mary Kay, followed by Zach, followed by Goldie, then me.
So I want to echo everything that everyone has said so far and give a huge thank you. This is what community is about. This is what community means. This means that the church has gauged what is needed in the community, what is needed in the area. And I personally am thrilled, you know, you've got your senior living, you've got your attainable housing, you've got the medical doctors, you've got everything, just what I was talking about earlier, walkability to where you need to go, livability to where you need to be. So many things. And I was pleased, I just looked up because I'm big on transportation, but I did see that there's a bus stop right there. But I also know that the church has many transportation buses and ways to get people around. And I know that, you know, the church taking care of the community is, it just really makes my heart happy, because there are so many instances where, you know, you sometimes feel that people aren't really seeing what's in the community around them. And I think this is absolutely seeing what the community needs around them. So kudos, and thank you so much.
Zach?
You know, I usually don't pile on, but this is worth piling on. Reverend Cleveland, I've known you for a long time. I know you worked on this a long time, and with your people. I remember visiting the site a few years back to come see you. This is an incredible project, and I just wish you the best of luck, not only for Mount Zion, but the people that you represent, the people you serve, and the surrounding neighborhood. Congratulations.
Dr. Wells, Mrs. Hoffman, then me.
Well, I think there've been so many Thanksgiving, and I'll just add my thanks, but Mount Zion is doing a God-sized project. And they didn't just start. They've always been coming to do for the community, and this is what we need. They're the ones who started Welfare Reform liaison, Reverend Brooks and Reverend Cleveland. So we want to thank Reverend Pierce and all of the members of Mount Zion for stepping ahead. It takes faith to step out on a project like this. But Becherby says, if you could do it by yourself, you don't need God. So this is a God-sized project. So thank you so much. It would be such a blessing to so many people. Thank you.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes, just briefly. Reverend Cleveland, the vision for this project is astounding. It's really amazing, and I'm truly excited by the vastness of it and all of the bases that get covered here are so needed. So just thanks very much for your leadership and the leadership of others in your, in the church. And appreciate your thoughtfulness in terms of the planning here and the total vision that you have. So this is a great project and a great day, and I'm very appreciative of the work that has gone into it, and I'm excited to see it rise from the ground over the next few years.
Mrs. Thurm?
Thank you. I too would like to congratulate you all on this project. It's a beautiful project. It's an amazing project. And congratulations too on your leadership, as someone else just mentioned. You know, it takes a special kind of leader to bring a congregation together to move this type of project forward. Not every leader can do that. And it takes a leader with heart and with vision and with a certain amount of charisma to bring a whole congregation together and a church together to take on a project of this size and this impactfulness on the neighborhood. And I just want to congratulate you all. It's a very exciting project. I know this is the kind of project that when my mother moved here from California, it's the kind of project we would have liked to have had for her at that time. But congratulations, and I look forward to the ribbon cutting, as Sharon said, sooner rather than later.
Going last, you run the risk of having nothing left to say. I just do want to reiterate that this is a great project. It is something that is very exciting. Goldie called it a God-sized project, and it truly is. Mount Zion has always been a partner. I remember during COVID, opening up your doors to anybody throughout Greensboro that needed shots or food, and it was really appreciated. Mount Zion is the type of church that really walks the walk, and we appreciate that. This is a great project. I like the walkability. You're right that people can live there and find everything that they need, all those important services. So thank you for your intentionality and that it took a while to come up with this plan, but this is a great plan. So thank you for your investment. And we had two really world-class projects, one right after another, and they're both going to be great anchors for the areas where they are. So thank you very much. I believe we have a motion from Sharon and seconded by Hugh. The, I think the first one is just the annexation. That passes nine to zero. H8 will require the statement. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Hightower, seconded by Mr. Holston.
And not just so moved, but I move this catalyst project in east Greensboro District One from Mount Zion. Thank you, Mount Zion. This zoning amendment statement by City Council on consistency with adopted comprehensive plan and reasonableness. The Greensboro City Council believes that its action to approve the original zoning and rezoning request for the properties at 2101, 2103, 2023, and 2029 Willow Road, 1301, 1321, and 1323 Alamance Church Road, 1606, I'm sorry, 1605, 1605 ZZ, and 1607 Chart Road from County RM8 Residential Multi-Family, County RS30 Residential Single Family, City R5 Residential Single Family, and City R3 Residential, oh, it's a lot, Single Family Three, to City PUD Plan Unit Development to be consistent with the adopted GSO Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, future built format, and future land use map. The proposed City PUD zoning district permits uses that fit the content of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
And H9 will also require a statement of consistency?
We got it.
Okay. The H8 passes nine to zero. H9 is moved by Mr. Holston, seconded by Mrs. Hightower. Mr. Holston?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Greensboro City Council believes that its action to approve the original zoning request for the property at eastern portion of Willow Road right of way adjacent to 2023 and 2029 Willow Road from County RM8 Residential Multi-Family to City R5 Residential Single Family Five to be consistent with, to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future built format and future land use map. The proposed City R5 zoning district permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. And the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
And that passes nine to zero. Thank you very much. Item 10 and 11, I'll read in together. Item 10 is a public hearing for an ordinance annexing territory into the corporate limits for property located at 4712 High Cone Road, 1.63 acres, Amanda Hodiern for Tom C. James of Columbia Holdings LLC. And H11, a public hearing for an ordinance for original zoning, 4712 High Cone Road, Amanda Hodiern for Tom C. James of Columbia Holdings LLC. Ms. Hodiern is here for questions. We have no speakers. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Vaughn. Again, the request is for annexation and original zoning for this property here on High Cone Road. The request is from County CZLB Conditional Zoning Limited Business to City CDCM Conditional District Commercial Medium. North of the request is currently zoned County RS3 Residential Single Family. East of the request is zoned City CDCL Conditional District Commercial Loan. South of the request is zoned County RS30 Residential Single Family. And west of the request is zoned County CZLB Conditional Zoning Limited Business. The subject property currently contains a single-family dwelling. North and south of the requests are also single-family dwellings. East of the request is undeveloped land, and west of the request is a retail sales use. The subject property is designated as commercial on the future land use map of the comprehensive plan and as urban general and within a neighborhood-scale activity center on the future built format. This is a conditional zoning, so these are the conditions that were advertised as part of the hearing this evening. Staff has concluded this request does support the comprehensive plans filling in our framework. Big idea to encourage, to arrange our land uses where we live, work, attend school, shop, and enjoy our free time to create a more vibrant and livable Greensboro. And the growing economic competitiveness, big idea, to build a prosperous and resilient economy that creates equitable opportunities to succeed. Proposed CDCM District As Condition Limits Negative Impacts on Surrounding Area and Permits Uses That Are Complementary to Uses on Adjacent Tracks. And staff is recommending approval of the request. These items were heard at the June 16th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The commission did recommend approval of both items. There were no speakers at that meeting on that item. I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kirkman? Okay, moved by Dr. Wells, seconded by Mayor Protem. Counsel, please vote. That passes nine to zero. Item H 11 requires the statement. Moved by Dr. Wells, seconded by Mayor Protem. Dr. Wells?
The Greensboro City Council believes that its actions to approve the original zoning request for the property at 4712 High Cone Road from County CZLB Conditional Zoning Limited Business to City CDCM Conditional District Commercial Medium to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. The proposed City CDCM zoning district permits use that fits the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and the approval is in the public interest.
Counsel, please vote. And that passes nine to zero. We will now move on to items H 12 and 13. H 12 is a public hearing for an ordinance annexing territory into the corporate limits for property located at 2603 Cromwell Road, 0.52 acres, Trace McKinney for McKinney Homes LLC. And item H three, a public hearing for an ordinance for original zoning, 2603 Cromwell Road, Trace Kenny for McKinney Homes LLC. We have no speakers on this item. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes, again, the request is for annexation and original zoning. The current zoning on this is County RS40 Residential Single Family, and the requested zoning is City R3 Residential Single Family. Northeast and west of the request is City R3, and south of the request is County RS40. The subject property is currently undeveloped. Northeast, south, and west of the requests are single-family dwellings. Property is designated residential on the future land use map of the Comprehensive Plan and is urban general on the future-built form map. Again, staff in making its recommendation for approval has concluded that this does support the Comprehensive Plan's creating great places goal to expand Greensboro citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices, and the filling in our framework. Big idea to arrange our land uses for where we live, work, attend school, shop, and enjoy our free time to create a more vibrant and livable Greensboro. Proposed R3s district permits uses that are similar to those on adjacent tracks. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended these items at their June 16th meeting. There were no speakers at that meeting. I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kirkman? Do we have motions or a move by Mrs. Thurm? Seconded by Mayor Protem. That is for the annexation. Counsel, please vote. And that passes nine to zero. The next item, item 12, requires a statement of consistency. Do we have a motion? Moved by Ms. Pinder, seconded by?
Second.
Mayor Protem?
The Greensboro City Council believes that this action to approve the original zoning request for the property at 2603 Cromwell Road from County RS40 Residential Single Family to City R3 Residential Single Family Three to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use. The proposed City R3 zoning district permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Counsel, please vote. That passes nine to zero. We will take 14 and 15 together. We have no speakers on this item. H 14 is a public hearing for an ordinance annexing territory into the corporate limits for property located at 4719 Bowman Avenue, 0.31 acres, Nady and Victor Garcia. And item H 15, public hearing for an ordinance for original zoning for 4719 Bowman Avenue, Nady and Victor Garcia. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes, again, this request is for annexation and original zoning from County RS20 Residential Single Family to City R3 Residential Single Family. Northeast, south, and west of this request is County RS20. The subject property currently contains a single-family dwelling. Northeast, south, and west of the request are single-family dwellings. Property is designated as residential on the future land use map of the Comprehensive Plan and is urban general on the future-built form map. The proposed request does support the Comprehensive Plan's creating great places goal to expand Greensboro citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices and the filling in our framework. Big idea to arrange our land uses for where we live, work, attend school, shop, and enjoy our free time to create a more vibrant and livable Greensboro. Proposed R3 zoning district permits similar uses to those present on adjacent tracks. Staff is recommending approval of the request. These items were heard at the June 16th Planning and Zoning Commission, and the commission unanimously recommended approval of both items, and there were no speakers at that hearing.
Thank you. Any comments or do I have a motion? Moved by Mrs. Thurm, seconded by Mayor Protem. Counsel, please vote. That passes nine to zero. Item H 15 requires the statement. Moved by Mrs. Thurm, seconded by Mayor Protem.
The Greensboro City Council believes that its action to approve the original zoning request for the property at 4719 Bowman Avenue from County RS20 Residential Single Family to City R3 Residential Single Family Three to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. The proposed City R3 zoning district permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. Three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
And that passes nine to zero. Item H 16 is a public hearing to consider landmark designation expansion ordinance for Poplar Hall. We do not have any speakers on this item.
Good afternoon, Mayor Vaughn and City Council. H 16 and H 17 are both landmark designation requests. The city participates in the countywide joint landmark program with the county. The County Historic Preservation Commission recommends landmark designations after a request comes in and a review by the State Historic Preservation Office, and then the governing body, the jurisdiction, makes a final decision. Owners of landmark properties are eligible for a property tax deferral of up to 50% if they obtain a certificate of appropriateness for any changes that are made to the property. The first item, H 16, is for Poplar Hall, 409 Sunset Drive in Irving Park. It is one of the earliest houses in Irving Park, built in 1914. It's still owned by the original family, the Brooks family. It has been preserved and maintained to a very high level throughout its history. It actually was, most of the property was designated in 2022 as a landmark, but this adds some of the original footprint of the lot, too. It's been combined with a portion that was subdivided previously. So this just brings it back to its original status as a historic property. H 17 is the Powhatan Apartments at 904 West Market Street. These were designed by architect Harry Barton in 1927. It's a really great example of multi-unit residential neoclassical architecture. It's one of the few buildings that Harry Barton built in Gilford County, and it's a great example of some of the apartments that were originally built in Greensboro back in the 1920s. I was hoping Samantha Smith would be here to talk to any technical details. She prepared the reports that were submitted to the State Historic Preservation Office, but she must have been held up at a Gilford County meeting she was at tonight. But I can answer any technical questions you might have about either of the properties.
Any questions for Mr. Clay? Dr. Wells has moved H 16, seconded by Mayor Protem. Counsel, please vote. That passes nine to zero. Mr. Clay, I think your explanation also addressed H 17.
He did, yes, ma'am.
Moved by Mrs. Hoffman. Seconded by Mr. Holston. Counsel, please vote. And that passes nine to zero. That is the end of our public hearings. I think before we move on to our general business agenda, let's take a 10-minute break or so. I have a feeling general business will take a while.
Do you think you have what it takes to be a Greensboro firefighter? What about you as a teenager? Well, Camp Blaze gives high school boys the chance to try.
Ready, set, go! Go, baby.
Yeah, grab that. Good job.
Zee, what made you decide to come to Camp Blaze?
Ever since I was eight years old, I always looked up to firemen. And it's a very cool camp. And I liked the experience of it, and I wanted to get into the academy, the firemen.
I love it. What has been the best part about this week?
Definitely the food. Like, just like beating new friends, talking to the firemen, learning what they do.
What's the hardest part?
This course, the course that we just did. Very tough. But other than that, the hardest part was the maze. Definitely the maze.
What do you think the best part about being a firefighter, actually working for the department, would be?
I think the best part about being a firefighter is saving people.
Sean, what brought you to Camp Blaze?
Well, I know Ian, and he told my dad that I should come out. And at first, I didn't really want to do it, but then a couple of weeks prior, I started like looking at firefighter things, and I really got an interest to it. So that's who brought me up.
Do you have a parent who works for the city of Greensboro?
Yeah, my dad's a cop, John Matthews.
So you decided firefighting is better than police work?
Oh, yes.
Why?
Because you actually get more action. You get to go into fires, and you get to save people.
Do you think this might be something you want to do with your life?
Yes, ma'am.
Tell me, Jeremiah, why did you decide to come to Camp Blaze?
I always wanted to be a fighter fighter when I was younger. And I saw it, so I asked my dad to sign me up, so he signed me up.
Is it what you thought it would be?
No, it's not what I thought it was. It's actually better than what I thought it was. It's a lot of things that we watch and do together as a team and competitions and stuff like that.
What has been the best part about this week?
Well, it's definitely that course. I mean, I didn't think I could do it, pulling 180-pound dummy. And then I did the course, and it was amazing.
What about you, Jeremiah?
The favorite thing that I did, I would say the course was the best thing.
What's been the hardest part?
Definitely the maze. No more than 10 inches wide. It's really hard.
Yeah, same for me, yeah. Maze is the most hardest thing.
What will you tell people about this week when you go back to school and tell your friends about it?
It's definitely amazing. Like, I want other people to come out here. I want this camp to grow. And it's very fun. I mean, we get to watch fires, we get to watch other people, and it's extraordinary. We get to rappel off stuff, we get to do things that most kids don't even get to do. It's a lot of fun.
Have you been inspired this week, Jeremiah?
Yes, because at first, I didn't want to do it, but I was working and I had to focus. And the more I focused, I could do it, so that made it interesting for me.
So tell us the inspiration behind Camp Blaze.
Really, the Camp Spark kinda, no pun intended, but sparked it for us. Aaron and I got together and we're just talking one day, and we're like, hey, I think we need a boys camp. And I've been sitting on it for a while, and Blaze was sitting in the back of my head. And I was like, what do you think about Camp Blaze? She's like, I like it. We got our core group, put a presentation down for the chiefs. The chief's like, let's go, let's do it. And then they've been 100% supportive ever since, and whatever we need, they're there. We're asking for a lot, a lot of money, and the community really stepped up, too, with donations.
What's been the best part?
Seeing these kids grow. Day one, we're kind of all like, what's going on here? We thought boys would be run bunch, and they're quiet, really, really quiet. So we had to work on getting them out of their shell, and that's all it took. And watching them grow from fears, just a trust fall, a low trust fall, then not want to do it, to doing it, to tight mazes that some of the young men already talked about, not wanting to do that, and seeing them do it. And Sean didn't want to do the course. He said, I don't want to drag that dummy. But he went out there and did it. And seeing, I mean, it's just, it's like a proud parent moment, you know? We've only known these kids for three days, well, some of them we know a little bit longer, but watching them grow in this short amount of time has been pretty amazing.
I feel like you're getting a lot out of this, too. You another firefighter.
Selfishly, yes. They've impacted me, and a lot of us got to help out with Camp Spark, too. And it impacted us probably more than it impacted them, and they don't realize what they've been doing for us.
What would it be like to work with some of these guys one day?
It'd be amazing. We have two that are going to apply for our next academy. So we'll have to put a little different game face on for them. But I would love to see, obviously, we want to recruit, but we're trying to build- But I would love to see, obviously, we want to recruit, but we're trying to build better young men, better and for the community, at their schools, at their homes, leaders. So if we can get some of them to apply and join our academy, that's just icing on the cake for us.
Find out more about Camp Blaze by going to greensboro-nc.gov, search Blaze. Welcome to Gate City Insider. I'm Rosemary Pliven. Summer is here, and you don't have to look far at all to find a ton of fun in the sun. Parks, pools, spray grounds, and a cool corner of the library offer respite from the heat from now through the start of the next school year and even beyond, of course. Today, we're going to visit with friends around the city to help you make the most of these all-important and so precious summer months. We're going to start with the best park department in the country. Hey, let's just say, the best park department in the whole wide world.
We'll take it.
I'm going for it, yes. Jennifer Hens is Community Engagement Coordinator for Greensboro Parks and Recreation. Hello and welcome.
Thank you for having me.
So glad to have you. Okay, you know, we all enjoy the parks year-round, and they're certainly beautiful, but summer, there's something special about it. So what changes, what are some of the things going on in the summer that we don't want to miss?
You know, the weather warms up, and it just makes you want to get out of the house and get moving. Everything is so green and beautiful. It's just a really great opportunity to get outside and explore places that maybe you've never gone before in the park system.
Yeah, so how do you find those? Like, I have a friend, and she's making it her quest to go to every single park. But there are a lot. I mean, how many recreation and park areas do we have?
So we have about 137-ish parks alone, and those include our bigger regional parks like Hester, Barber, Country, and Keely. But then we also have about 133, 134 neighborhood parks. And so those are going to be those smaller parks that you're going to find within neighborhoods throughout the city.
There's a lot going on. Okay, so some things have maybe have changed since you've visited some of these parks. What are some new features that maybe over the past year, 18 months, have kind of gone in that we might have missed?
Absolutely. So out at Keely Park, we are in the process of creating our first adaptive mountain bike trail out there.
This is pretty cool. What does that mean?
It is so cool. We're really excited. So it's actually a trail where people can take adaptive mountain bikes out onto that trail and utilize that space. So we just got two adaptive mountain bikes, so we'll have those, and then the trail will hopefully be finished up this summer. So it will be open to anyone. Anyone can go out and ride, but it will be really nice for people that have those adaptive bikes to be able to get out on the trail as well.
And of course, there's already a trail there.
There is already a trail. There's a lot of trails out at Keely. There's paved trails out there, there's walking trails, there's dirt trails, and then there will be this mountain bike trail as well.
And Keely Park has the spray ground. They have the disc golf, and there's tons of stuff to do there.
Yep, the spray ground was actually expanded last summer, so the spray ground's a little bigger, which is nice. It has more space out there. We also have our Up in the Air Playground, which is a fully inclusive playground. We've got the community garden, we have disc golf. Keely really is one of those sort of one-stop shops where you can go and just spend the entire day.
Yeah, we have a few of those.
We do, we do.
I think we should stop by Country Park because there's some special summer installations there as well.
Yes, so Country Park, the pedal boats are officially back out. We love those. You can go out and rent those and get out on the lake and explore out there.
Favorite animal or favorite boat?
I really like the dragon.
The dragon, purple dragon, right?
Yes, yeah, the purple dragon is so fun. But there is also Ron Swanson out there.
Ron, oh, of the swan.
Ron Swanson, yep, he's out there.
And the ducks, of course.
Yep, the ducks are there, yeah. They're so quacks-a-lot, so yeah. Yeah, they all have fun little names.
Cute, cute, I love it, I love it.
And then the zip line is open, which the Science Center actually runs that for us, but the zip line is open. We have walking trails, we have the zone, which is a mountain bike area, so people can go and explore that. The Country Park really does have a wide variety of things as well.
I mean, and then, of course, there are things popping up at all the parks around Greensboro, so don't miss them.
Absolutely. There's always events. We encourage people to check out our social media, which is GSO Parks and Rec, and they can find all sorts of events happening throughout the summer.
What are some of the favorite programs you have coming up this summer?
Yeah, we have a lot. We have Parks and Rec Month, which is actually in July. So adult recess is coming back, which we're super excited about.
That's popular.
Yeah, that'll be on Friday, July 12th, from six to nine. So it's a time for adults just to be kids again. So you've got to leave the kids at home. You've got to be 21 or over to get in. We have access to the spray ground, a ton of different playground games. We'll have food and beverage vendors, a DJ. It's just a really great time to come out and sort of forget about the worries of life and just be a kid for a few hours.
That's super fun. But there are kid things going on this summer, too.
Absolutely, absolutely. The next week, we'll actually be at Hester Park, and we're going to have a movie night again. We're very excited about that. We'll be partnering with our police grill team friends to come out and grill hamburgers and hot dogs for us. And then the next week, we have a new event, which is called Makers Way. That's going to be at Gateway Gardens, and that's all about maker space. So we're going to have glass blowers out there, we're going to have woodworkers, pottery, and people will be able to come out and learn how to do these things and take things home with them.
I love Gateway Gardens. It's a fun place to explore.
I say it's one of our hidden gems. I think a lot of people don't realize it's there, but we really want people to come explore it because it is just beautiful. There's something for all ages, from the children's garden to just walking around and enjoying the beauty of it.
Yeah, I'll tell you, one of the things my kids like to do is they like to race to find the letters in order. And so we always start with a different letter, though, so it has to be a little challenge. So you don't always start with A. You might have to start with G and then go all the way through the alphabet and come back.
Oh, I love it, yeah.
It's a little game.
Look at that, I'm like, now I need to go out there and do it.
You've got to do it. It's a challenge. It really is not as easy as you might think. You're like, I know I've seen that letter, where was it? So that's a lot of fun. What about for the teens?
For the teens, we have a really cool program called Teen Nights at the Rec, and that program happens once a week throughout the summer, and it's opportunities for teens to go to different recreation centers and do different activities, from glow-in-the-dark dodgeball to we have a roller skating night, there's a kickoff at Warner'sville, and then we just have different things throughout the summer for teens to get out and, one, meet new people, hang out with your friends, you know, and just have a place to go and have a really great fun time.
Yeah, have a place that somebody wants them to be, and that it's safe for them to be.
Yes, and we're not telling them to leave. We want them there. We want them to come out and enjoy and have a great time at the recreation centers because they offer so much.
Yeah, they really do. And it's a great way to kind of get keyed into things that are happening year-round, too. And you might find out about a class that you want to take or meet a friend that you're going to go and workout with or run with or whatever. What are some of your favorite things to do in the summer in our parks?
You know, I always say I'm an indoor girl, which I know is ironic that I work for Parks and Rec and I'm an indoor girl, but I love our gardens. I love to go out and just, some days, I'll just go out and literally just sit and take my lunch and sit on one of the benches and just hang out in one of the gardens and just watch people enjoy our facilities. So I personally, I'm a very passive Parks and Rec user, but I love to do that. Also, you know, I keep saying I'm going to go out and start hiking more because we have so many trails. We have over 100 miles of trails and greenways within our department, and they really are for all levels, so you don't have to be an expert hiker to get out there. You can go out on the downtown greenway, which is a paved path. And so our trails are really great, not only for us to get out, but also take our four-legged friends. You know, my dogs and I'll go walk at the trail sometimes and have a really great just afternoon.
Yeah, and especially this time of year, those four-legged friends like those dirt trails because they don't hurt their little paws.
Correct, and mine always get distracted by all, like, the wildlife.
And we see a little bit of that, too.
There is, there's wildlife. You know, we tell people, just let the wildlife be. We've walked into their house for a little bit, and we just let them be, and they are most likely not going to bother you at all.
Well, does everyone have this much fun in Parks and Rec?
We try to. We really do, we do.
Well, it looks like a great place to be, and we will definitely be enjoying the parks a lot this summer. So thanks for spending a little time, sharing a little bit, but there is so much more to do, and you really just have to make a plan for it.
Okay, we now move on to the general business portion of our agenda. Item I point one is a resolution approving bid in the amount of $10,671,335 and authorizing execution of contract 2024-0460 with Mainlining America LLC for the waterline rehabilitation 2025 project.
Only one that's met them goal.
Moved by Mrs. Hightower, seconded by Mr. Holston. Counsel, please vote. That passes nine to zero. Item I point two, resolution authorizing the sale of city-owned surplus property located at 1001 Fourth Street to Mill District Properties LLC in the amount of $1,179,000.
Move the item.
Moved by Mayor Protem, seconded by Mrs. Thurm. Counsel, please vote.
Quick question on this item. I think I voted for it. I voted for it. Why is it not moving? Where does the money go? I know I read in the general fund, but how can you, how else can we use this money?
This was part of how we balanced the budget. We were that confident that we would get the sale completed this year, so these, these funds have already been allocated.
You spent, that ain't good. Okay. I was hoping you'd, we'd find a way to, but never mind. Thank you very much.
And that passes nine to zero. I point three, resolution approving a change order in the amount of $80,451 for contract 2023-0340 with Jimmy R. Lynch and Sons for the Atwater Drive Waterline Extension Project.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Thurm, seconded by Mayor Protem.
I will not be supporting this item. It has not met the goals from the entire time it's even been a project. It's just been constant. So I will not be voting for this item.
I do just want to say that is an escalation clause, clause, and it took 176 days from the bid opening to the, to the execution. And, you know, during that time, there was a change in administration and prices went up and tariffs came in. And, you know, that's what happens when it takes six months to approve a project.
Thirty days of that, thirty days of that was not on us. So when you go back and look at that timeline of when that was, that was not on, all on us. It was not. So, and that was part of the good faith efforts review and part of providing documentation there. So that whole picture is really truly not accurate. And so is that going to be the next contract? There's going to be another $80,000, another $80,000? And I just think this was set up from the time we voted on this from before, so.
Well, I'm going to say I know this project very well, and it was 176 days.
I, I know you do, and that's the problem too, because to me, what was going on with this, only one person really knew about until the last minute. You and I talked about it at the other council meeting, but no, this is not, uh-uh, and I'm not supporting it. It's not meeting the goal, and now the additional $80,000 drops it even further down. And it could have been better.
That was moved and seconded. And it, Sharon said she's a no.
Counselmember Holston?
You don't have a screen.
And that passes seven to two. Item I point four is a resolution approving bid in the amount of $23,425,866 and authorizing execution of contract 2017-020A with Jimmy R. Lynch and Sons, Inc. for the Lee's Chapel Road feeder main project.
Move the item.
Moved by Mayor Protem, seconded by Mrs. Hoffman.
And I will not be supporting this item. This one did not meet the goals at all, zero. And there's 176 days, the reason why? No.
I would like, oh, go ahead here. Well, I just had a, a comment about that and the goals, just to make sure that we have clarity. When we talk about not meeting the goals, can someone explain to me how the goals are determined, just to be able to determine the feasibility of it being able to be met?
Yes, the contract is reviewed by the MWB specialists, and they're reviewed for scopes of work within the content of the contract, and that determines what the goals can be. So you look at the work that can be done.
Yeah, can I get somebody from the department to be able to explain that so that we can all be able to hear that?
Oh, is there somebody here?
Yes, ma'am, I'll ask our MWB office who's present to come up. So with each of the projects that come before us, there are goals that are set, there's a goal-setting spreadsheet that is, has formulas within it that are based on the availability of companies within the different trades. And those goals are determined, determined in that way. We have been working with a consulting group in the past few months who are looking at the goal-setting and goal-setting process to try and figure out whether or not we are shooting too high or whether we need to, to look at this to make the goals more in line and more attainable. What we get back from some of the contractors, our prime contractors, is that we will, from the Office of Business Opportunities, send them a list of vendors within different trade categories. I'll use example of plumbing, for, for example. We will send them the plumbers that we have on our list, but they may not have the availability or capability of doing something on a larger scale. So they, they will get a number of plumbers, for example, that, that do more residential than they would do more commercial. And in that, the availability of those companies may not be what, what we thought they were initially, so.
You know, if you recall when there was the discussion, when the first vote on Atwater and Mr. Cobb was here, there was an agreement between Mr. Cobb and Mr. Lynch and staff that utility projects are much harder to make goals because there is much less of an opportunity for subcontractors. And they agreed that maybe that those goals should be lowered somewhat because of the, the fewer subcontractors, there are fewer services there were to subcontract in a utility contract compared to a construction contract.
Well, I think it's also contingent upon what the trainings are. And so the catalyst for all of that is knowing what the NIGI codes are that apply to subs and how they actually are listed in the categories of the scopes of work. So you may be a plumber, but you may be a commercial plumber, you may be a residential plumber, you may be, but if your code only identifies you as certain, you get in one category and should be in all, in other category, it makes a difference. So it's how you are classified initially, starting out as a contractor, as a sub, in that, in those NIGI codes. And that's why you have the B2G software that should have already been implemented so that it puts that data in accurately and correctly. Because when you provide subs to primes, it is with the understanding that there is capacity. You don't give them a sub that you know is working or you know falls outside of the NIGI codes as well. So it's a method to it, and it is, and that's how it's done.
Right. And, and that goes to, to my question also. So in looking at, at this contract or this bid, the goal for MBE was set at 15 dot 50 and for WBE was set at 24 dot 5. But you're saying that potentially in there, for instance, if there was a plumber in there, and all the plumbers who are available, residential, commercial, whatever, all in there, but they may just be looking for the commercial, so it would really be just a portion of that and not all of it?
Yeah, for something like a project like this, they likely would be looking more commercial than they would the folks that, that we still are sending from our list of available, in this case, available plumbers.
Right, then, so the Sharon's point about using the, the coating system, that would help to ferret out specifically, but we're not necessarily using the coating system right now. We're using just a, a general bulk, a broad brush as opposed to a, using a sledgehammer and not a scalpel?
Broad brush.
Right. So then when, going back to the item I one with Mainlining America and looking at, at their MWB or OBO memo, they were, their goals were at 6% and 13 dot 5, MBE and WBE respectively. And they came in at 7% and 17%. So you see something like that and you say, somebody has goals and they hit them very well, some of the same trades are included, the, the grading, the concrete, the flag supply, the hauling, some of those same trades also show up in the current. I cannot presume that it's a simple answer, but why the difference in outcomes?
Outreach. It's outreach.
I'm sorry.
It's outreach.
Michael. Why, why, why did, I can't presume that it's simple, and it's, and there cannot be a, a three-sentence answer, but generally, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not talking about the good faith effort, I'm talking about the goals. And I know these are two separate projects and, but why the difference?
And, and I would say the primes have the responsibility of going out to the, to this list that we've sent to them, but they choose from that list. We don't necessarily. So if they're choosing from the list and they're choosing the right subs in the, in the appropriate NIGP codes that can actually do the work, then they're getting a different result than what someone else is getting.
So then it's potentially possible, not necessarily apples to apples, but it's potentially possible, and it's shown here by Mainlining America, that it's, in their case, it was possible. But in the case of the I four, it didn't happen. I don't know why. I'm not going to presume why, but it didn't happen. And you're thinking that it may be just, just the outreach? Potentially, potentially, that's one factor.
You know, I, I would say that when a contractor gets a list, that by and large, they contact everybody on that list. So they're not picking and choosing, they're going out to the whole entire list. Now, they don't check in advance to make sure that these people are available.
Availability.
So when you go to bid a project on Monday, you might have somebody available who's not available on Friday. So, you know, it is, I don't think it's fair to say, well, he could do it versus he could do it, because it's the availability. Those lists do not account for availability.
And from who we send to them, they are required to contact all of them and provide the paperwork to us.
They have to provide proof that they, that's part of the good faith effort, when they don't meet, when they don't meet the goal, right? However, because if you send it out though, and you don't get a phone call back, you automatically just give them credit for that outreach. That doesn't mean they talked to that sub, period. That just means they sent an email and they didn't get a response back. Well, we emailed them. That's an easy checkoff, pretty much. So, and that's where our office needs to be expanded and needs to come in where it comes to compliance, because you need to be following up on it. We gave you this list of 20 subs. You say you sent them all an email. Then we have to verify that too. We're supposed to, but we don't, because again, this office is understaffed and does not have the appropriate people that it needs to get the work done. Nothing to you, you know that, but I'm saying, that is part of the issue as well.
Thank you, Sharon. Just continue. So, and this is somewhat semantics here, but looking at item I four, which we're talking about now, and then item I one, which is mainlining, you know, those, those disparities, those, those differences, were those, were those goals being set over the same timeframe? In other words, was, was, was one in the fall of last year and one is in the spring of this year, or are they both in the spring of the year? Just for example.
Both in work? Yeah, both in the same timeframe.
All right. Okay.
Mayor, after the vote, I think City Attorney Cubberden, I can add some context to the, so I'll let you go and go with the vote, and City Attorney Cubberden, I can add some context to the matter overall.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Humphrey.
So that passes six to three. Item I five is in ordinance to amend the Water Resources Capital Project Revenue Bond Fund to fund Lee's Chapel Waterline in the amount of $23,425,866.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Thurm, seconded by Mayor Protem. And that is the end of our printed agenda. Now we have boards and commissions. Mrs. Hightower?
None tonight, I'm sorry.
Dr. Wells?
Yes, I'd like to appoint Jack Flowers to the Insurance Advisory Com- I'm sorry. I'd like to appoint Jack Flowers to the Insurance Advisory Commission.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes nine to zero. Mr. Matheny, boards and commissions? Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes, I'd like to appoint John Glazeman to the Fireman's Relief Fund.
Is that, is that an open position?
Yes, the chief called me about it several weeks ago.
Great. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes nine to zero. Mrs. Thurm?
Not tonight, but I did have a conversation based online with Wes last week with, with the city attorney, and if we can just have a change of wording for that board for our next meeting so we can vote on that. We talked about just doing it where when one position comes open, somebody in the alternate moves up. If we could have something documented on that, then I'll appoint somebody to that position next time.
And actually, Madam Councilwoman, it is allowed, that is actually already allowed in the charter.
It, it is allowed in the charter?
It is.
Oh, yes.
It is. I wrote it down just for you somewhere.
Okay.
It is allowed, but we do have, right now, the position, the position, the board has seven seats currently.
Madam City Attorney, I think you're going to have to get closer to your mic.
Right now, the Board of Adjustment has seven seats, and it's only, have five seats that are seated. So we, we would like for you all to consider, for better operational purposes, to appoint for those seats. Those seats don't belong to any council member, so anyone can appoint. Our alternates by charter would roll on if they are not, if their terms are not expired. However, our two alternates' terms are expired.
Great. I'll appoint somebody at the next meeting then. Thank you.
Thank you.
So for clarity, can you say, City Attorney, can you speak again about that? So for clarity's sake, because I have someone that just resigned. So I, I, I do want to make sure. So how many seats can we do? Five or seven?
The Board of Adjustment has seven seats. Right now, there is only five that are filled because of a death and a resignation. The seats don't belong to any board member, even though historically, one person that has, has appointed, when that seat becomes empty, that same person appoints. But any one of you all can appoint. And so we have two seats that are open. Now, Madam Councilwoman Thurm says she's going to appoint next week. If you have someone that you want to appoint, that would be great, because operationally, we would like all seven seats filled.
All seven, yeah.
Only two seats vacant, yes, out of seven. Right, so one, one passed, one passed away and one resigned, yes.
That person drew.
And the charter allows for the alternates to roll on if their terms have not expired, but both of our alternates' terms have expired as well.
So let me ask you this, because I have a, I have an issue with equity and fairness here, because if anybody can wind up appointing somebody in a seat, then where is, where is parity there? Because where is representation of other areas who may not normally have, get opportunity to be? And I've seen some of those Board of Adjustment appointments, and they come, they're lopsided. And so that's why we've been a lot more intentional about ensuring that we all have an appointment, even though I know that at-large people, they can appoint from wherever. But the district person tries to put their district person there as a representative of that area, because without that, you have no voice at the table.
Okay, so we looked at increasing the number from seven to nine. Operationally, that's going to be challenging. And so again, there is one open, so if you have an appointment, we would love for you to appoint, because it makes, it makes it better operationally of all seven of the seats. And then there's two alternate seats that can be appointed, that, and alternates serve for the same length of time as your regular people, which is six years.
So in essence, you say there's four seats open?
No.
Two?
There's two.
Well, where are the alternates?
Well, the, and the alternates, yes.
So that would make?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I got lawyer's math.
Ma'am?
I got lawyer's math.
You, you're going to have to speak up.
I have lawyer's math.
So I would like to hold, since District Five has not had anybody sitting for the past six years, I'd like to have one of those seats and I'll appoint my person at the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, I will.
You want to appoint someone?
Yes, I will.
Great, that will give us seven members and we will be able to function effectively. Thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am. I, I, I know, he just resigned. The person that was there, he, he just resigned, because, yeah.
What are, what are the two open seats?
Excuse me?
Tiffany Rudd.
On Board of Adjustment?
Board of Adjustments.
And who was the other?
Drew.
Someone resigned, I want to say the councilwoman.
No, Drew's on, no, Drew's on the Board of Adjustment.
Right.
He never did get on ABC.
Okay.
He went to Board of Adjustment.
And then Ms. Tiffany Rudd passed away.
I'm sorry?
Ms. Rudd passed away.
Yeah, no, I know that.
And so those are the two seats, and then the two alternates, their terms have expired.
Okay.
None this evening.
Okay, Hugh?
None this evening.
Ms. Fender? All right. Comments? Mrs. Hightower?
So I have several comments. One, and I hate that Mike Fox has gone away with John Davenport, but I would like to inquire, John Davenport, who continues to come with many zoning attorneys and, and he does traffic analysis, is not on our on-call list. And I don't understand how it is that he can work for zoning attorneys in this city and out of this city to do traffic analysis, but he cannot get on the city's on-call list. And the last time he attempted, they kept him off for one point, one point, which really was more of a barrier, because really the requirements, that man is no, makes no sense. And then if your on-call lists are not open on a regular basis, then we're keeping out a lot of people who may get some opportunities to be there. You cannot keep out folk who are, who, who do the work. Mike Fox goes and hires, and Mark Isaacson goes and hires the company, and they can't get on the on-call list here? Something's wrong with that picture. And we need to look closely at that on-call. That needs to be corrected and changed. So I need that looked into, and we, we, we got to straighten this out. We got to straighten this out. I do want to wish happy 100th birthday to Ms. Catherine Barbara. She celebrated on Sunday. What are you laughing at? You're dying on Skippy, I'm upset. But I'm, I'm trying to do a happy birthday wish, so stop. To Ms. Catherine Barbara, she celebrated Sunday over at Barbara Park. And I believe, if I don't want to mistake, but that was, she's the wife of our African-American longest-serving, he's now deceased, City Councilor Jimmy I. Barbara. Yes. Jimmy I. Barbara, yes. And so her, she celebrated 100 years on Sunday over at Barbara Park. So happy birthday to her as well. The final piece of thing, I have some concerns. We had a great night tonight in celebrating Mount Zion with their project in East Greensboro and Southeast Greensboro and what it's going to do, how we and Southeast Greensboro and what it's going to do, how we talked about, everybody up here, everybody up here had a comment. Everybody up here had a comment about how great that is going to be, what a changer that's going to be, what it's going to do for an area. Well, guess what? Can I get those pictures, please, on, 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 on the screen? We, we can't, we can celebrate, but then we got to turn around and look at this. Can you scroll those pictures? This community deserves better than a house that's sitting here where this wall was a carport and that done fell down and now trees are growing up in it. Next to a very nice house over here, she's keeping her house and so if you, I got some more. Keep, keep going, keep, keep scrolling, keep scrolling, keep scrolling. Because this is not how East Greensboro, we keep talking about things and we've had a great, but look at this, look at this. This house has been looking like this for years, years. Got a yellow condemned, got a condemned sign on it from the city. Look at it. And then, but it's sitting over there, there's a nice house to the left of it and a nice house to the right of it. How is the vibrancy of a community supposed to grow when it continues to have elements in it that look like this? So we celebrate Mount Zion doing a hundred million dollars, awesome, wonderful, great. But, and then we got this. This is right next to Gethsemane Church. A church has to look at this and deal with this. It's growed up over the whole porch. I had to find it myself on the GIS, but it was sent to me from a community member. And so people in the community are saying, we aren't, this is why they say, well, we're not doing anything or things are not happening. We got great things happening. Willow Oaks has got houses that being built over there and English Street's got houses and so houses are coming. We need to do more, but we got to do something about this right here. We got to go to the state and say, listen, tax department, you need, we need to buy this house, we need to get this house ourselves so we can knock, and, and all we're going to do is knock this down in a couple of weeks. Once Christie finished going through the process over in code, then we're going to knock it down. So we're going to pay to knock it down, but it'll be a hole in the community. You can't get to the road for ten thousand with all brand-new houses. We got to have things that, that, you know, are different and rent, and don't let a house get to this demise. But this is so unfair to the community that they have to look at this. And our colleagues at the county, they're over the tax department and they've got a lot of these properties that are owed years of taxes and they won't foreclose on it. And that's a way we could get some of this done. We've got to have a serious legal discussion around making this, correcting this and doing some remediation efforts in our community. How do we acquire this property? I've been going to the county before Carolyn Coleman passed away, she and I went over there. Something's got to change here about this. Nobody wants, this is so unfair to have for that lady right there who's got her grass cut and her grandkids tours in the front yard, which you can't see, to have to look at that and worry about the rat running or the vermin running or the raccoon running or the snake crawling from over there. I'm saying we got to find a way to correct these nuances. Thank you.
Well, after all showing the, the conditions, I kind of echo what Ms. Hightower said. We, we, we need to do something about how things look in our, in our community. But I'd like to invite you to District Two next Wednesday morning. That's the twenty-third at eleven o'clock, the Mill Tower will be dedicated. And that's a project that we worked on, that Chris Wilson worked on for the past ten years. It was rusted there on Yanceville, on the corner of Yanceville and textile. So we invite you at eleven o'clock for the dedication of the new tower. That's going to be a bright spot right across from Revolution Mill.
Yeah, that's exciting. Mr. Metheny? Mrs. Hoffman? Mrs. Thurm? Mayor Protem?
No, not this evening, thank you.
Mr. Holston?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I also want to say congratulations to Mount Zion Baptist Church for its investment, but also to, to the Carroll Properties for, for their investment. Those are the kinds of things that I think they even said themselves that are going to be critical for our overall growth and we need those throughout the city. Mount Zion is going to be, be a big stimulus for that community right there next to 421, headed off to Toyota. I'm really excited about those. And I also want to say thank you to each and every one of you who offered your condolences and words of comfort and support and prayers on the loss of my brother. We, we did funeralize him yesterday in San Antonio and we are holsten strong. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Fender?
Yes, I would like to echo what has been said also about the up-and-coming development that we have. It's just the sparks that's happening and I know they're going to continue to happen, but really excited about the development in Southeast Greensboro. It, it's been a long time coming and look forward to seeing more opportunities. And also just, I know I keep putting it out there, but reminding people to sign up for National Night Out. This Friday is the last day that your neighborhood can sign up for that. And if you don't happen to have a neighborhood that's signing up for that, you can come downtown to the police department where it's, everybody is welcome. So again, another opportunity as we talk about some of the blight that we see, getting to know who your neighbor is and when you get to know each other, you're less likely to commit those crimes. So this is an opportunity for one, you to get, individuals to get out in the community to get to know who their neighbors are. But then again, if you feel like you don't have a neighbor, come downtown and you get to meet a new neighbor. So again, that connectedness will definitely help create a more healthier community. So thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anything this evening. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, two quick items, just follow-up. I will have an update for everyone regarding the vehicles, whether it's a vehicle request that we either donate or sell, such as the item that you, that was before each night that was continued. That is a, in the times that we're seeing right now with the inclement weather and different destruction and disasters that we have, we've actually had another one, town that is probably about thirty miles away that has provided us with a similar request. But I do want to make sure the council is aware of, you know, how we do that and then also how we work with, you know, if there are options for nonprofits or, or any type of sale and disposal of different surplus vehicles. So I do owe you that. Also, I'm going to kind of toss the baton to City Attorney Covitch. There was a considerable amount of conversation related to some of our MWBE processes. I do know we have recently been looking at scheduling a work session. It sounds like we may need somewhat of a two-part work session. There's a tremendous amount of detail, not just the program plan, but we want to interweave in our development services in some of our departments that utilize MWBE the most so we can all understand the types of construction projects or other things that, that go along with it so that when items come before you, you can have that information beforehand. So we're working at, at that pretty hard. Had some conversations today and will continue to have those, so we'll keep you updated.
Madam City Attorney?
Nothing from the city attorney's office, just to say that we're trucking right along and, and moving. And just to piggyback on what City Manager said, this MWBE program has been through a lot of transitions and we all know that. And so in Mr. Humphrey's defense, everyone is still trying to figure out with new people coming in roles and, and where everybody is supposed to be and what everybody is supposed to be doing. So with some time and grace, I think that we will get to where we need to be or with the law, we'll get to where we ought to be. So we know the laws are changing and we have to take that into account. And there's some things we can move forward with and there's some things we kind of got to hold up on to see what the law is going to come down and eventually be. And so we'll, we'll do that and we'll get together and we'll, Madam Hightower, Councilwoman, we're going to work it out. You're going to be all right. You're going to be all right.
All right. If there's nothing, yes, moved by Mr. Holston, seconded by Mayor Protem. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.